Good evening, everyone. I'm James Rhodes, Pitt County Planning Director. We're glad you joined us tonight with this introduction. I'll turn it over to our chair to call the meeting to order and then we'll go through roll call. Mr. Goos.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Welcome all to the December Board, Planning Board Meeting, and we'll go through the roll call here if you would. Mr. Rhodes, please.
Sure will. Fred Austin.
Present.
Present.
Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck. David Davenport. David Davenport.
He's acknowledged with a hand up.
Here.
Brad Guth is here.
Here.
RJ Hemby. John Landron.
Here.
Steve Little.
Present.
Tucker Moore.
Present.
And Mr. Chairman, we received word that Maria Rogerson would not be available for tonight's meeting, so you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Well, if we could proceed with our next item is a moment of silence. If you'll all join me in that, please. Thank you. Now, Mr. Rhodes, if you would lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or if there's any corrections for corrections.
So moved to approve.
Mr. Little has moved. Do I hear a second? Mr. Austin has seconded. Mr. Rhodes, if you could go through a roll call.
Okay, this motion is for the approval of the October 21st minutes. Fred Austin. Prove. Fay Bearpitt.
Approved.
Don Brown.
Approved.
Naomi Buck.
All right.
David Davenport.
Yes, approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
John Landron.
Approved.
Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, that was unanimous for approval.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item, which is public addresses to the board. Typically, we allow for these to happen at the particular agenda item that the audience member would like to speak, so we'll do that again tonight if that is okay with the board, and move on to the first item number five, which is the development review for Suncrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Jason Bryant will be handling these two items, and then Eric Gooby will step forward for the rezoning request, item number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. First up, we have Suncrest Preliminary Plan. This plan is located on Old Creek Road, west of its intersection with Witcher Cherry Lane in the Paxtola Township. It consists of 13 lots, 27.7 acres owned by BP Investments Incorporated. Here's an overall view of where this is located. This is a little bit closer zoomed in. And taking a look at the plat, a few things we will note. There is a cemetery located on site, which will remain there on its own special parcel. And there is an overhead power line, as well as a power line easement that will run through the property. This site is owned RA, with a minimum of 30,000 square foot lot size. No new streets are proposed. Electricity is to be provided by Greenwood Utilities Commission. Water service provided by Stokes Regional Water Corporation. The conditions and requirements on this plat, Pitt County plan and the flood information should be corrected and show the map book stated, and the date, 6/19/2020. Open space is required of .39 acres. The county environmental health, septic systems must be approved prior to final plat approval. NC DOT has previously agreed to lots identified as 1 through 9 and agreed to their respective driveway placements. Driveway permits will be required. Lots 10, 11, and 12 and 13 should be assessed through a shared ingress, egress, and regress. Easement resulting in one driveway connection for each pair. Any utility requirements may be installed with necessary encroachment agreements. Greenwood Utilities Commission has requested a 15-foot electric easement along Old Creek Road on existing overhead electric lines, add a 30-foot electric easement centered on existing lines, Lot 12 to extend a 30-foot electric easement to Lot 13 in the common corner between lots 12 and 13, and to extend the common line for approximately 250 foot out of 30-foot electric easement coming from Old Creek Road centered along common property lines of 10 and 11 for approximately 600 feet. Stokes Regional Water Corporation will supply water to the subdivision. School districts are Paxtolas and North Pet High. Pitt County Emergency and Management approves this plan. Here is a view of the site facing south. This is another view of the site from the same location. This is a view of the adjacent property across Old Creek Road. This is another view facing west down Old Creek Road. A view of the current site conditions facing west. The Technical Review Committee recommends conditional approval. We've had a few adjacent property owners that have been notified. We've received a few phone calls in regards to the proposed development. Comments and questions, those wishing to review the plan with interest in how the soil paths were shown and the overall design, and some wishing to address the board via letter and attend the meeting. The first letter we received, we have a few points that we feel need to be addressed. First concern, just want to double check, this existing gravel path shows our right-of-way easement per our deeds. Mike Baldwin's team has surveyed our land. The plans list our property as residential, however, we were agriculture approximately 20 acres, and the additional back property has approximately 25 acres with trees to harvest at some point in the future. Third concern, the addition of 10 driveways along the north side of the subdivision. This will cause considerable safety concerns, as traffic along Old Creek Road is busy and multiple connections create the additional potential for accidents. As one vehicle is coming along the highway and may see a car entering the road, he or she will assume the path is clear, but right beyond is another driveway with traffic entering the highway, which becomes a surprise. What is not shown on the plat is the fact that there is a curve in the highway just before you arrive at the proposed side from the west. Pitt County subdivision requirements have changed through the years to help eliminate these issues. There should be one point of entry from the subdivision with an internal road assessing each lot. Then the collision risk would be reduced by 90%. Let's not revert back to building subdivisions like we did in 1980s and all the issues that follow. Fourth concern, there is no shown means to handle surface water runoff. The normal chain of events in a subdivision is for individuals' defense. We add landscaping to border the individual lots. On this track of land, all water has to go to the roadside ditch, which is marginal at best. One of the lot lines restrictions occur, there will be blockage of the water flow to the highway. Water will then pull and become stagnant. Mosquito breeding grounds, the soils on this track are marginal at best, and the field routinely holds water after rain event. There needs to be some sort of stormwater management system employed. Here is where an internal road would allow the right-of-way and water movement. Fifth concern, water supply. The present system is already weak. At busy times of the day, low pressure will become more of an issue with the addition of these lots. Is the water main size being accurately accounted for? Sixth concern, trying to create small lots along the highway with larger lots to the south. These flag lots are sized to allow adequate home sites and homes in keeping with the neighborhood. The road front lots are at best suited for small odd-sized lots and home placement in less than desirable positions. Let's make the lots more consistent in size so the homes will be spaced uniformly and the size of the lot corresponds to the home placed there. Thank you for addressing our concerns. Sincerely, Michael and Luann Day. Letter number two. My name is Jackie Haddock. I live at 3505 Old Creek Road. We spoke briefly on the phone last week concerning the proposed subdivision, 10,000 located on Old Creek Road. Having lived all my life across the road from the property and watching the farmers work the soil, plant the seed and transplant, plant the tobacco plants, then cultivate the crop, and lastly, watching the harvest of it during the summer months and late fall. I freely admit that the thought of all that scenario going away pains me, but as I have known for some time now, with the evolution of all things, this day would come, and now it has, and there's nothing I can do about it. With all that being said, my concern now is the prospect of further flooding on my property due to the addition of driveways that will be installed to permit access to the lots purchased by the new homeowners. The drainage ditch borders the property approximately three quarters. Its length ends abruptly, then the flow of water takes a 90-degree turn into a tile under the highway, entering a small ditch that would allow it to flow back to the creek, Grendel Creek. But apparently, that ditch is blocked further down, and the water backs up the ditch on the road, and it overflows, crossing the highway, becoming a danger to motorists and flooding a large portion of my yard. My neighbor on which there is a smaller ditch rest has attempted to clean it out, but his equipment isn't quite up to the task. He did the best he could approximately four months ago, but it still floods when we have a heavy rainstorm. I contacted DOT concerning the larger ditch, and they came out in 2017 and spent a week digging it deeper and wider, but couldn't clean the ditch leading back to the creek. But as you can see by the pictures I enclosed, I still have real problems. And if BP Investments isn't required to create access roads to the property or digging a retaining pond, I only see the situation becoming worse. I do feel, at the very least, BP Investments should be willing and required to build an access road in order for the homeowners to gain access to their property. The placing of tiles and driveways in that ditch is only going to further impede the flow of water, and it will begin backing up further back up the road towards my home. I will be more than glad for you to come out and let me walk you through and ask questions you may have. Also, if you have any questions concerning any of the pictures, please call. I hope you, along with the rest of the planning commission, take what I've said today in consideration and assist me in any manner you may. All right, at this time, do we have any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Are there any questions from the Planning Board members? Mr. Bryant. All right, I don't see. Oh, Mr. Austin. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The, what is the speed limit there at Old Creek Road? In that point? Does anybody know?
It's 55, but it may be 45 at that point.
So, yeah, once those driveways are approved by the DOT, would they petition for a 45?
DOT has reviewed the plan. I know they've agreed upon the driveway locations, but far as a change in the speed limit, I'm not aware of any of those changes.
Right, right. That's the only question I have.
All right, just curious, Brad, and just have these, have these items been addressed that we've just heard to anybody thus far, or is there somebody willing to answer some of those questions right now?
I think we're going to hear from some of the folks that are involved with the project here in a few minutes. I can certainly let Mr. Bryant address anything. Of course, it's been approved by the, recommended for approval by the staff, so they think that it meets all the requirements that the county has, but Mr. Bryant could certainly speak to that as well.
And understood, and I see too, because I would certainly make the motion to grant approval once Mr. Bryant will share with us, if those items have been addressed.
And we also have Mike Baldwin on the phone with Baldwin Design Consultants. Mike could further go into some of the, some of the concerns that have been brought up by adjacent property owners.
Okay. Mr. Davenport, do you have a question? I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, I, I think I feel the same way that the Mr. and Mrs. Day and Ms. Haddock feel about those driveway cuts, those additional nine driveways being added to that stretch. This is in a neighborhood that I go through quite frequently, and I'm just wondering if maybe someone with the project could talk about why we, why an option wasn't presented that gave some access to those lots behind them rather than cutting driveways all along that piece of property?
Mr. Davenport, I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent BP Investments. It was Bill Blunt from Bethel. And a lot of time and thought has been put into this piece of property. The, when Mr. Blunt employed our services back in the early part of the summer, the first thing I do that is paramount when looking at a piece of land, two things. One, are the soils classifications. So I hire a licensed soil scientist here in the county, Aspen Soil Services, and then the equally important, if not more important, well, it is more important, I set up a meeting with NC DOT to talk about driveways. I got the ADT, which is your average daily traffic along this road, before I met with Mr. Gene Pittman, out on site, owner about the middle of June. I went over with Gene, the sketch I had planned, along with the ADT, we looked at what curve was in the road, and it's not a curve that's going to blindside somebody. And Gene took it back to his office, met with his boss, Mr. Robbie Taylor, and the result is what you, is what we've brought before you tonight. So that's, that's one thing that we've addressed with DOT, and I think we've handled it prudently as we should have. The second thing is the runoff. This land, and I just went out there, I've gone to the site several times, as I normally do, but since we've had quite a bit of rain, the last thing I did today before I came and sat down, and before y'all in this meeting, I went out to the site because I know it had quite a bit of rain. And other than the, other than the tracks from the larger wheels on the combines, there's practically no standing water on this piece of property. Some references were made to some poor soils that are on the property, and can y'all see this if I hold it up?
Yes, yes.
Everything colored in yellow, orange, or green is suitable soils for septic systems. Now, I will say, the green is the mound system, so we try not to design any mound systems if all possible. So we've got, this is a good draining piece of land. I know where Mr. Day lives out in the, in the, in the back, probably 2,000 feet off the road. Some of those soils are tighter. I know just because we did some septic system work or design work for Mr. Day. So we've got good draining soils on the front of the road, which also allow for seepage for runoff. But one thing that a lot of people don't realize, when you take row crops, and right now, there will soybeans planted out there this year. Those soybeans run from the backside of the property to the road. All right, so you've got furrows that the water runs down. Well, when these lots are developed, they're going to become grass, grass floes. So now what you've taken is a runoff coefficient of bare earth, and now you've given it the runoff coefficient of the grass, which is a lot, increases the intensity, excuse me, the time that it takes the water to travel across that lot. So I don't think we're harming, well, I know we're not adversely harming the drainage out there. I will agree with the ditch on the opposite side of the road, on the north side of the road, it is, it is blocked up. I could see where somebody had been out there trying to, trying to clean it out, and it's got standing water in it. But, but that doesn't preclude us to being allowed to, to develop our property in compliance with your zoning and subdivision ordinance. With regards to the water pressure out there, we've got an eight-inch looped line that's in front of our property, Stokes Regional Water System. So I think Mr. Day made the comment, probably as far as his property is back, and I would assume he's probably got a, you know, probably a two- or three-inch water line, just your friction loss going that far back and not being on a loop system, there possibly may be some, some lower pressures back there where he is. But we're right up on a, on a loop system, this loop with other water lines in this general area. So I foresee with an eight-inch line, I obviously foresee water for days. Let's see. Jason, can you help me with, was there any other, I know there was flooding, there was the driveway connections? Was that the, was that the more, more substantial points that were, were brought out? I don't want to.
And there was also questions about whether easements were properly shown and if easements needed to be shown on the side and back.
And we have shown the easements. There are several parties that have right to the easement, the ingress, egress, and utilities easement that goes down the right-hand property line. Mr. Day shares, shares in that, and a couple of more people as well. I will note that one thing, and I'll try to hold this up too, this is the deed where it reserves the easement, and in yellow, I will, yellow, I get kidded about saying yellow, yellow with an A, but it says a perpetual, non-exclusive access easement. Okay, a non-exclusive access easement means anybody can use it. An exclusive access easement means only the person who is being conveyed the easement can use it. So this, this easement, while we're not, we only have two lots tying into it, basically, Mr. Blunt could grant access to whoever he chooses and still be within the legal rights of how this easement was originally conveyed. It was originally conveyed to McLean Electric, and then McLean Electric sold it off to different parties. So we want to, Mr. Day has done an excellent job of taking care of that easement. Every time I've ridden out there, it's been mowed nice, the gravel's been kept nice. So it'll be my job that, you know, I'll take this information and pass it along to Mr. Blunt, so he can make sure these people that he conveys to, you know, they share in that responsibility as well of, you know, not messing up what Mr. Day's worked so hard on, on making look nice.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
All right, thank y'all.
We have a couple other folks that would like to address the board. Mr. Haddock. Jackie Haddock.
Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you for coming to the meeting and having your concerns addressed.
Yes, sir, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I would, the previous speaker broke, brought up several things I would like to address.
Okay.
The one prior to that, the speed limit through here is 45 miles per hour.
All right, thank you for that.
But the people run 75 and 80 and 90 and 120. It's a straight stretch. That curve he's talking about. Uh, that curve he's talking about, you can get blindsided. I live probably three or four tenths of a mile down the road from that curve. I, I live in that parcel of property across from, I guess you call it Suncrest. I can back up, I can go to drive out of my drive, look both ways, see nobody. And I can turn right head west towards Greenwood and I'd look in my rearview mirror and somebody else would bump on my car. And I never saw them because they pop around, you know, they pop around that curve. That is a curve where somebody can get hurt.
Okay.
And if you, if you put nine driveways out there now, that's just on that side of the road. On my side of the road, there's one, two, three. So now you're talking about 12, 12 to 13 driveways. Um, so that being said, um, I go to the, I, I don't understand why, um, there couldn't be an easement oh, across the highway on the backside of that ditch to where these people that buy these lots can access at one to two points without having 13 drives, um, out here in this smaller area. It's a very, it's a very short, uh, stretch of road. And, um, so that's.
Okay. But thank you.
And, uh, no, I had, uh.
Okay.
I want to speak about the water and that di- and the ditch. So I've lived here 55, 55, 56 years. And I don't have to do surveys, but I, 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 I live life. And I see it every day because I've been here and I see, I see what, what, what comes by here. And it's all hours of the night, all day long from, and, uh, they, um, I don't know. It's just, um, that with those driveways, it just worries me, it scares me to death. And I've been here, you know, all those many years. So I would request and desire that they eliminate some of these driveways. If they put 13 driveways over there in that ditch, um, there'll be nothing but tiles. It'll be, it'll be a solid drip. Cause see, I think the each, each, each drive is what a 20 foot tile. And you multiply that by, by 13 and then a space in between, it's going to be almost solid driveways and solid tile. And that's going, that is going to add for more water runoff. Let alone it being, um, just a flat surface with grass, which will impede that water flow. Um, contrary to, uh, straight, straight rows as, uh, was spoken about.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your, your input. I think we have a couple of other folks that wanted to, uh, address the board as well. Um, Mr. Miss Day.
Hello. Um, I, yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Um, when was the traffic survey completed? Was it completed before the pandemic or was it during the pandemic when there was no school buses and et cetera?
Um. Uh, Ms. Day, it, it was, uh, completed well, but, well before the pandemic. We, we have a database of, uh, DOT's, uh, traffic counts. Um, I, I'm saying it was probably at least a couple of years ago.
Okay. Um, the other issue is, uh, um, well, I've got, I've got, I've got some other questions if you don't mind. Um, will there be an engineering plan that'll be submitted that we'll be allowed to look at instead of the surveying planning?
Uh, an engineering plan, uh, while we, we have the ability to do that for uh, a subdivision of this type, there is no engineering that's required.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, regarding the easement also, can we ask that there will be an onsite field, um, site visit for all of the owners so that that easement can be discussed? And what will be, um, you know, for all the owners to know and be, have a heads up on everything?
Uh, ma'am, I, I, I think that would be, uh, outside of the scope of the planning boards.
Okay.
Party to, to, to ask that. Um, I can let Bill Blunt, our client, know that. But, uh, I think we're, we're, we're moving beyond the, the legalities of complying with the, the zoning and subdivision ordinance of Pitt County by doing that.
Mr. Baldwin, uh, good evening. Um, on, uh, lot number nine, it looks like that, uh, our driveway easement goes through that property.
Uh, Yes, sir, Mr. Day. It, it does.
And our water lines.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, Pitt County has, has, had us as residential, but we're also agriculture back there. And there's going to be farm equipment, combines, spray rigs, fertilizers, all going down that path. If the person owns that property, you know, he just can't pull the fence off or whatever by the edge of the driveway. I mean, how's this going to be addressed?
Uh, well, he, he's not going to be able to put a fence up in, in the easement, Mr. Day. So the, um.
From the center line of the driveway, how far can we go over? I mean, how much is the easement from the center of the driveway? That's probably the best way to ask him.
Uh, hold on, I gotta get my scale.
You have the other question?
And I don't know if this is something that'll be addressed through this one. But I guess one of the concerns I have too is when they start to do construction, where will the entrances be for those on all of those lots? Will it be right up against the road on the easements? I don't, on our easement or even on the garrison easement? I mean, where will that, is that outside of this?
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Uh, from the center line of the driveway to the western edge of the easement is approximately about 16 and a half feet at the rear end of the, at the southeast corner of lot nine. And about 17 feet up toward the road.
David, Mr. Davenport, would your fertilizer truck be able to get through that? Your big, big rig?
It'll be a tight squeeze, Mike.
That's something we, we would have to consider because then we bring a combine in there with a head on it, which is a little bit wider, do you think, David?
Yes.
Well, Mr., Mr. Day, you, you, you can't encu- Mr. Blunt is the fee simple owner of the property. You can't encumber him any more than your easement, easement is wide. So if, if, if you don't have enough room on the west side of the, the center line of the path, the center line of the easement, uh, well, it's not the center of the easement. It goes all, all, all the way almost to the property line over on Mr. Stansel's property.
Right.
So, so.
And that's a heel, slight heel on grass. I mean, uh, I have no.
I wasn't through, sir.
Staging.
So, so if the, if the head on the combine is, is too wide, well, you're going to have to do like the combine does when it's riding down the road sometimes. You're going to have to, to get to one side of the road. Because you can't go outside of your easement.
Guys, we have a couple of other folks that would like to, uh, comment as well. So let's, let's move on to them. Mr. Miss Day, we've got your comments. And if any of the planning board members have any more questions for you, um, when we, uh, move to a vote, we'll, uh, readdress those then. Mr. Baldwin, thank you for addressing those concerns.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Bickel?
Yes. Uh, my major concern is the, uh, gravel driveway leading back, uh, to our property. We're, are, we share the driveway, uh, with the Day family. And, uh, my concern is whether or not property owners will be required to, uh, support the maintenance of that road. Right now, the three property owners that use the road share the cost of maintaining that gravel driveway. And, uh, if we add two more driveways off of that, uh, we're going to have additional traffic that's going to cause wear and tear to that road.
Yeah. And I, I think if my understanding is correct, and Mr. Baldwin can correct me, is that, um, you know, he certainly can't make any guarantees for the new property owners and their neighborliness. But he would certainly encourage them to participate, just as you all have done for, for years.
Well, when we bought the property, we, we signed in our contract that we would assist in the maintenance of that driveway. And I would, any, I would hope that anybody who purchases the land, that would be included in their contract, that they would share in the cost of the maintenance of Fox Hunt Lane.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bickel, uh, can I talk?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, how, i- i- is you and, and Mr. Day and, and who else? Is, is there one other party that shares in that?
Yes, Michael Clendenon.
Okay. How, how do y'all, how do y'all go about the, the cost sharing? Just so I can relay this to, because you know, sir, we, we can only help, I mean, we can only hope for the best of people, out of people. So, you know, that, at, at, at the end of the day, that's all I can do and, and, and try to help the situation. Because like I said, you know, our, our client owns the underlying fee on the land. But look, I'm, he wants to be the good neighbor. And I, and I would hope that the lot owners of lots 10 and 11 want to be good neighbors as well. So, so y'all just, how, how do y'all do it? Just, um, uh, get your materials cost, your crush and run and things like that. And then just neighborly split it up.
Well, we have someone to apply it and everything.
Right.
We don't just buy them.
That's what I mean. But you, you just take the bill. You don't go through any, uh, significant mathma- ma- mathematical accounting. Y'all just kind of split things up.
Exactly.
And, and that's fair enough. I just, I'm trying to understand from, from y'all so I can relay this on to Bill Blunt. Because.
Well, I'm just, I'm just going from when I bought the property, I knew upfront before I bought the property. And when I signed the piece of paper, there was additional agreement for the maintenance of that right of way.
Could you get me a copy of that?
I'll look for it.
Okay.
All right. Thank, thank you very much.
Can I, is, wait, we, he can.
You can get that to the.
My name and number from the planning department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank y'all.
The best. All right. Mr. Bryant, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir, not if there are no further questions.
All right. Are there any other questions from the planning board members? Mr. Landren?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Mr. Baldwin said that, uh, stop by the property today, by the area today, um, uh, in regards to water runoff and potential flooding. I know you said that today was a pretty, pretty hard, hard rain day. And, um, did you say that you saw no such standing water, um, built up anywhere around the area today?
Oh, oh, no, no, sir. That, that's not, not what I said. I said the water I saw standing on the property was created from the low spots where the combine tires had been going, you know, picking the beans. And it, there was standing water in the ditch where that cross pipe is that a lot of these locals are, are referring to. And, and, and that's due to the, the downstream end of, you know, there being some blockages there.
And you don't, you don't think with the additional driveways, it adds anything to this?
No, sir. Uh, with, with the, the way we're turn- turning in a row crop field into a grass yard, uh, we decrease that. Ri- ri- the, the driveways is, it is irrelevant to, to the runoff. The, the runoff comes from the back of the property, some a thousand feet deep, then it runs toward the road. Well, the, the, the drive, the, the covert, whether it be a, a black HDP pipe or a reinforced concrete pipe, that's just a conveyance method, uh, measure, excuse me. But the, the runoff, what's running across this land is what's going to be slowed down by the development of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Uh, Mr. Little, you have a question?
I have a question. I was just going to thank Mike for answering the question that I did ask earlier about addressing the concerns. So thanks, Mike.
Thank you. If there are no other questions from the planning board, um, I think we can, um, entertain a motion. Um, this was, uh, recommended for a conditional approval by the, uh, planning staff, um, regarding the, um, requirements that are going to be in place. Um, do I hear a motion, um, regarding this, um, recommendation?
I saw move.
Mr. Little, move that, uh, we approved the, um, conditional, uh.
Okay, I'm on it.
Is Barefoot, is that a second?
Uh, yes.
In a second, uh, Mr. Rhodes, can we hear a roll call vote for the motion to approve?
Yes, sir. So this is for conditional approval of Suncrest subdivision. Uh, Fred Austin?
I approve.
Fay Barefoot?
Approved.
Don Brown?
Approved.
Naomi Buck?
Approved.
David Davenport?
Yes.
Brad Guth?
Yes.
John Landren?
Yes.
Steve Little?
Approved.
Tucker Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that was unanimous for conditional approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank y'all.
All right. Our next, um, item is Crestfield, um, preliminary plan. Mr. Rhodes, are you gonna, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up now, we have Crestfield, Crestfield preliminary plan. This plan is located on Blackjack Simpson Road, north of its intersection, Better Road. It's in the Grimesland Township. This is 10 lots, 7.7 acres owned by Leon Hardy Jr. and Karen Hardy. This is a view overall of the location. A little further zoomed in there. This is an overall view of the plat. Zoomed in a few areas to note. This is future right of way of the remainder of the track. And the floodplain that's located on the property is down in the corner. It's only a small portion. Small portion of the property is located within a hundred year flood zone. The site is owned agricultural residential, which is a Simpson zoning, uh, 25,000 square foot or greater lot size. No new streets are proposed. Electricity is to be provided by Greenwood Utilities Commission. Orders to be provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. Conditions and requirements on this plan, Pitt County planning, the riparian buffers. Conditions and requirements on this plan, Pitt County planning, the riparian buffers on these parcels must be shown. All farm drain tile removed must be shown in all subsequent emittals. Open spaces required, point three zero acres. Subdick systems must be approved prior to final plat approval. NC DOT will require driveway permits, driveway locations for each lot have been predetermined and may not be altered. Driveways for lots two, three, and nine, and ten should be located a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five foot from the right of way of State Route seventeen fifty-five. Future development of Pitt County parcel eight zero nine zero nine and nine seven four five that will be accessed through the ingress egress easement will require roadway improvements on SR seventeen fifty-five that will be comprised of left turn lanes and possibly right turn lanes. Greenwood Utilities Commission, please add a fifteen foot electric easement back of proposed egress on the two future roads, the electric easement will need to be located opposite of the future water service line for the development. Eastern Pines Water Corporation will supply water to the subdivision. School districts are GR Whitfield and DH Conley, Pitt County Emergency Management approves this plan. This is the view of the site from Blackjack Simpson Road facing east. Another view from Blackjack Simpson Road. This is the view of the adjacent property across Blackjack Simpson Road. Worth noting that Laurel Oaks subdivision be located along the road there on the left. This is the mini storage that's an adjacent property to the north. Technical Review Committee has recommended conditional approval. Adjacent property owners were notified, staff received a few phone calls, uh, mainly wishing to see the overall design. And does anyone on the board have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, I do not see anyone with any questions. Is there anybody here in the um, meeting that needs to speak on this? Don't see anybody's hand raised for that either, so um, if we can entertain a motion to um, for this uh, preliminary plan, conditional approval, recommended by the uh, Technical Review Committee. Entertain the motion now.
I saw a move.
Mr. Austin? Barefoot has seconded that with. Mr. Rhodes, if we can have a roll call vote for the conditional approval?
Yes, sir. Crestfield subdivision. Fred Austin?
Approved.
Faye Barefoot?
Approved.
Don Brown?
Approved.
Naomi Buck?
Approved.
David Davenport?
Approved.
Brad Guth?
Approved.
John Landron?
Approved.
Steve Little?
Approved.
Tucker Moore?
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, that was unanimous. And Eric's up next for the rezoning request. Right.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have a, we do have one rezoning request tonight. Uh, the request is by O'Neal Otero and Ceskeya Markano for um, requesting to rezon approximately two acres of their property, it's parcel number zero two three six three. It's on the western side of NC forty-three south, uh, just north of its intersection with Beastokes Road. And the request is to go from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. And the proposed use for the conditional district is to allow an office and repair garage slash shop for a refuse material hauling business, and this is express waste removal as well as a tax preparation services office. You see the property in question, uh, again, it's on the, the western side of NC forty-three south. Um, Beastokes Road is just to the south of this property, uh, you see Toll Road to the west. Uh, so it's sort of between the loop where Toll extends from the northern end of forty-three back down towards um, Hollywood's Crossroads. This is an existing house on the property, this is the structure that they are planning to utilize for the tax preparation services. Uh, this is a view of NC forty-three south, if you're looking, if you're heading south towards the Hollywood Crossroads intersection. And then the view north is if you're heading back towards Greenville. Uh, some existing residences located uh, within, one, the smaller one adjacent to the property, this one is adjacent to that smaller one on the other side, on the northern side. Uh, on the eastern side of NC forty-three south, there's an existing mobile home park, this Daystar Mobile Home Park. And there are some existing commercial businesses located within uh, close proximity to this property. And most of these are already also zoned general commercial, including um, Stallings Mini Storage on Beastokes Road. So the comprehensive land use plan designates the property as suburban residential. Uh, that designation is intended to include residential land uses, uh, including single-family manufactured home subdivisions, uh, limited multifamily, commercial office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. That criteria includes uh, frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, uh, proximity to other similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as residential land uses. Uh, this category is distinguished because it has a greater potential for development, and it has, includes a broader range of land uses. So you see the existing land use, again, uh, the current designation of the property is residential, but it's mainly a, it's, it's a old vacant home. Uh, there's some residential around it, particularly with the mobile home park on the east side, as well as some single-family uh, on the north and south sides. And then you also see uh, several properties that are commercial in nature in the area. Zoning map, you see it's rural residential, but you also see some existing general commercial property, particularly to the northern side, as well as uh, along Beastokes Road. That's, the one on Beastokes is, is Stallings, and the uh, commercial to the north is the former Sunshine Gardens Nursery, and it's being used for uh, I think another landscaping business currently as well. Uh, the general commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily residential uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares, and the utilities to support that type of development. Again, it's also a conditional zoning district, and that does allow for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions. And that, again, the proposed use is office and repair shop for uh, express waste removal and tax preparation services office. The conditional uh, zoning requirements requires a conceptual sketch plan. And so the applicant, Mr. Otero, has provided this, and just to point out a few things on this, this plan. You see the area highlighted in blue, that's the existing house, it's up towards the front of the property. Uh, they are proposing to build a sixty by thirty garage, that'll be the repair shop, uh, that'll be behind the house. Uh, there, the parking will be proposed to be located next to the existing home. And there's also uh, an existing natural buffer that they'll be utilizing uh, for screening purposes. And then, of course, there's also an existing drive on NC forty-three south that they'll be utilizing, and will probably have to um, improve to meet DOT standards for the non-residential use. So we have a few uh, comments, again, because it's a conceptual plan, uh, we will not issue a zoning compliance permit until the applicant submits an actual site plan prepared in accordance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, that plan will also have to include a landscaping plan. Uh, and that would include buffering and screening around any kind of outdoor storage areas. Uh, and also need to show the required parking spaces, which also had to be paved and maintained with concrete, asphalt, or a similar material. Other requirements they'll need to meet, uh, if they're disturbing greater than a half an acre, or greater than one acre, they'll need to submit a soil erosion and sedimentation control plan, uh, there. If the development is, is exceeding a half acre of disturbance, they'll also have to submit stormwater calculations. Uh, the existing structure and the shop will both have to be permitted and inspected by Pitt County inspections prior to occupancy. And they'll also need to comply with environmental health, as well as uh, NC DOT requirements, both for the septic tank and the driveways. Staff does find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, uh, given the property's location on a major thoroughfare, uh, as well as, is, as well as its proximity to existing commercial land uses and general commercial zone properties. And it also meets the, the location criteria for the suburban residential category. Staff also finds the request is reasonable and in the public interest, again, because it is on a major highway in close proximity to several general commercial zone parcels. Uh, the zoning is also intended to accommodate the range of retail service, uh, office, limited wholesale, and multifamily residential uses, and it's in an area that supports that type of development. So staff does recommend approval of the request, and we do recommend several uh, additional conditions. And these conditions mainly um, are consistent with the, the comments that I went through earlier. Uh, there's also a condition that the lot should not be maintained, used, or operated as a salvage yard uh, for storing, keeping, buying, or selling wrecked, scrap, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles or motor vehicle parts. Uh, no more than two unlicensed used motor vehicles which cannot be operated under their own power may be kept or stored on the property for a period of fifteen days or more. Uh, there are currently some, some junk vehicles on the property, and we've been working with Mr. Otero to get those cleaned up and to bring that into compliance with, with this uh, requirement. And this condition would just ensure that it stays that way. Again, after, any sort of outside storage areas uh, should only be used for the storage of equipment for the proposed, excuse me, the proposed use. Uh, and no waste or refuse materials should be kept or brought to the site. Then again, uh, no permit for, or no zoning compliance permit will be issued until the site, uh, site plan is, is submitted to our office for review and approval. Also need to provide that landscaping plan, uh, any outdoor storage areas should be enclosed by a security fence with at least six feet in height and screened by a ten-foot wide uh, landscape buffer yard, uh, planned in accordance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And as I mentioned with the sketch plan, they do have some existing uh, vegetation, and we can, we can consider that for, uh, as long as that remains on the site and, and in place, we can also utilize that for, uh, to satisfy that requirement. Uh, any required parking spaces, access drives, and loading areas, again, will also be paved and maintained with concrete, asphalt, or similar material. Uh, they'll need to submit the soil erosion and sedimentation control plan if they are disturbing over one acre. And also will need to submit stormwater calculations uh, for any improvements involving more than one half acre. And again, also will have to obtain all required permits from inspections for the occupancy of the existing structure, and comply with all applicable environmental health requirements, and obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT. So this time, we'd like to entertain public comments, I think we do have a couple people, Mr. Otero, I believe, was logged in, as well as a Mr. Guyer. Um, and following this, following these public comments, board will then make a recommendation to board commissioners, uh, which are scheduled to hold a hearing on January eleventh. So with that, Mr. Chair, we'd like to turn it over to the board for public comments. And before we start, I do have an email from Mr. Guyer that was submitted to Ben Rogers with our office. And I'd like to just read through that real quick, uh, for the board. Uh, this was submitted on December ninth, so last Wednesday. I said, hi, Ben, thanks again for taking the time to talk about the rezoning request on Monday. I checked OPUS with an aerial photograph overlay and saw this property is already heavily wooded adjacent to our property. When we talked, I thought it was a bit further north, and thus the open field, which would have been a bigger concern in terms of impact to us. But that's Mr. Dixon's property. I think Mr. Otero's request will impact his neighbors on NC forty-three, uh, E.G. Edens, Cox, Dixon, Robertson, Joyner, much more than will us, provided he doesn't cut down any of the mature trees at the back of his property. Uh, based on the map you sent us, it does not appear that he's proposing to change anything in the back part of his property, approximately three hundred fifty feet deep, that it joins ours. Now, I guess that doesn't necessarily mean he doesn't plan to cut down those trees, correct? As long as he leaves that buffer, I find it hard to imagine how this change will impact us significantly. And we plan to listen to the discussion next week out of curiosity and to learn more about how these things work. Best, Chris Guyer. Again, Mr. Guyer, Mr. Guyer's logged in, so if he has anything else to add, he's, he is welcome to uh, provide any comments. But uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over for, for any comments.
Is there any um, questions from the board for Mr. Gibby? Mr. Austin?
Um, yes, is um, Mr. Otero being advised of the, the possible development with the forty-three plan in the future to make sure that uh, he doesn't, you know, uh, come up with any expenditures that he'll have to undo later?
And we, yes, sir, we have discussed it with him, uh, Mr. Otero and, and uh, his wife, we met with them in our office and discussed not only um, the fact there's a plan, but also the widening project and how that could possibly impact that existing structure at the front. Um, if the zoning is in place prior to that plan, that plan's not anticipated to be up for consideration until early next year. Uh, there wouldn't be any changes to the zoning, so as long as the zoning is in place, he is, he'd be fine. Uh, the only impact, again, would be just with the widening project for forty-three, how that was gonna impact the, the building. And I believe when, when we looked at it, it wasn't gonna affect that, I think it was, I think it was just outside of that, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Guyer, would you like to um, comment?
No, not.
Okay.
I don't have any concerns.
All right. I don't see any other um, folks interested in commenting. If so, please raise your hand. All right. Well, can we entertain a uh, motion on this um, recommendation from um, the for rezoning?
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Moore has motioned to approve, and I believe that was Mr. Little for second. And if we can get a roll call vote for the rezoning approval from Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and again, this is for the rezoning for the Otero property. And first, uh, Fred Austin?
Approved.
Faye Barefoot?
Approved.
Don Brown?
Approved.
Naomi Buck?
Approved.
David Davenport?
Approved.
Brad Guth?
Approved.
John Landron?
Approved.
Steve Little?
Approved.
Tucker Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that was unanimous for a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And uh, Eric is up next to bring you an update on the NC forty-three south land use plan. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
All right, Mr. Chair, uh, just a update, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you an update on our completed tasks, our next steps, and also gonna uh, run through some, some of our plan recommendations, our draft recommendations. But uh, to start with, the things we've, we have accomplished so far this month. Uh, since the last time we, we discussed this, back in October, uh, we did finalize a draft land use plan, uh, we are currently taking public comments on that plan, and uh, any public comments we get based off, based on that, we will uh, work on revising the plan um, and presenting that hopefully to the board next month, or early twenty twenty-one. Uh, we've also conducted our working group meeting, number three, back in November. And just prior to this meeting, and, and Mr. Guth, I think you were involved in that, we held our second public input session uh, virtually, and presented the entire plan, uh, and entire draft plan uh, to the public, and uh, had a, had a pretty good turnout, we had, I think, about twenty-four people were logged in. Uh, so we felt like that was good, and had a lot of good questions. So um, some of the next steps, again, tonight, we're presenting the draft recommendations from the plan to the board, and then uh, early next year, hopefully bringing that final draft to this board for your review and recommendation. So with that, I'm going to flip over to uh, PowerPoint that our consultant prepared for tonight's uh, public input session, I've trimmed it down a little bit, just so that like I said, we had discussed the, the background information and the existing conditions the last time, and so we're gonna just talk about the, the plan recommendations and sort of how we see uh, things progressing in, in this area of the county for uh, the next few years, uh, once the plan's adopted. But the, the land use recommendations, it does have four categories, there's um, land use, there's environment parks and greenways, uh, transportation infrastructure, and drainage and stormwater. and stormwater. And also part of this is the future land use map. And so this is, this is the draft map. And um, as we have talked about before, there was a lot of discussion or a lot of input that we received from the public that indicated that the northern half of the corridor and the southern half of the corridor were very different in terms of the character. And so this, this future land use map sort of respects that. Uh, what we had heard from a lot of, lot of the input and our, with our stakeholders and from the public was that the northern end would be more appropriate for that suburban and commercial type of development. So what you see is you've got a, as, as you work your way down from Fire Tower Road down to Worthington Cross or down to Hollywood Crossroads at Worthington Road and just down to Ivy Road, you see there's a lot more yellow, and that reflects the um, suburban residential type development, uh, as well as some, some larger uh, commercial areas which are shown in the red and the pink. So just south of Fire Tower Road, there's a suburban commercial node, uh, large suburban commercial node at Hollywood Crossroads. And then the suburban commercial or suburban residential that is reflected uh, surrounding those areas and even out uh, to those recently annexed areas along Mills Road to the east. And then as you move further south, what you see is uh, a transition more to rural residential agricultural and agriculture uh, categories. And then when we get down to Chicag, there's a small node of rural commercial uh, at Chicag that sort of reflects the existing development that's there already. So for our land use category, uh, some of our recommendations, of course, to preserve the agricultural land and that, that rural character of the care, of the, of the corridor, particularly on the southern end, uh, to direct growth to appropriate areas. So not, not having a lot of commercial strung out along the highway, but trying to direct that to those, those nodes where we've shown the, the suburban and the rural commercial areas. Uh, then the suburban commercial node Hollywood Crossroads, that's an area that's, is somewhat ripe for development. There's, there's sewer available in the area. Uh, once, we probably have to annex into the city for that. But the city, again, is one of our partners on this plan. And so uh, we envision that developing uh, into a much more larger uh, commercial area. And we'll kind of touch on that here in a second. Uh, then also to encourage conservation subdivisions when uh, approving residential design. So preserving open space and uh, larger areas have smaller lots, more open space, and just have a, a smaller footprint of residential land out there. So for Hollywood Crossroads, again, looking at a commercial node uh, and having a collector street system to sort of provide the access and, and disperse the traffic through that area to keep it, uh, to limit it mainly from having a lot of driveways on forty-three. Uh, also some, some road extensions in that area possibly as it develops, uh, particularly Mobley's Bridge Road, uh, maybe some extensions from Toll Road to sort of uh, create more uh, access and more, more appropriate alignments of roads in that area. And then also you see those orange uh, circles. I kind of touch on that here in a second too, under the transportation section, but those are areas that are uh, subcontractor or subconsultant, uh, Kittleson Associates. They've analyzed the roadway and determined that these are areas that are probably appropriate for some kind of uh, enhanced pedestrian crossing. So again, just another uh, concept of, of, of the sort of character of commercial that we're looking at in this area. So not real dense, big box type development, but smaller, uh, more context sensitive development that would, that would be appropriate for that location. Under environment parks and greenways, uh, recommendations are to uh, connect existing parks in the, in planned parks through a system of greenways, trails, bicycle uh, connections. And then uh, the areas that are, have already been annexed into the city, uh, will be using the city of Greenville's adopted level of, a level of service standards for the parks. So what you see in this, in this map, it shows a lot of gross acreages uh, for parkland. But what this doesn't account for is, is the existing parks out there. So while you may have an area that says that there's thirty-six acres, uh, that needs thirty-six acres of recreation area, it may already, there already may be enough acreage with Alice King Park or with Boyd Lee Park, or even the schools in the, in the area that kind of uh, would help satisfy those requirements. Uh, under transportation infrastructure, we want to obviously address any safety concerns um, mainly by limiting driveways on NC forty-three South. Uh, when you have more driveways, as we talked about with the subdivision tonight, when you have more driveways, that's more conflict points along the road, more opportunities for, for accidents and for collisions. So we want to try to limit those driveways, uh, make sure that, that properties are connected, that they have that connectivity for internal access, for um, or cross-access agreements uh, for, for commercial properties. Uh, we want to add more safe pedestrian crossings and, and as well as bicycle facilities. And then as, as transit uh, or as, as the property develops and there's a need for more transit, uh, particularly towards those um, commercial areas, that we can accommodate that as well. Then under stormwater and drainage, uh, we want to encourage uh, new gravity sewer services out in the area because there's a lot of areas where, where sewer may be available, but um, the, there's a high water table, so septic systems aren't necessarily appropriate. Uh, we wanted to discourage new forced main sewer connections. The utility companies have, have concerns about um, long-term maintenance on things like that, as well as um, GCs looking at having some regional pump stations in that area to serve larger areas. And we'll make sure we're keeping our stormwater uh, requirements updated for, for future development. And then also continue to work with Southeast Drainage uh, for any stormwater and utility upgrades within their uh, drainage system. So the way we're going to implement this plan is um, we'll have steps and, and programs that we'll, we'll outline in the plan. Uh, we'll also be looking at having a crosswalk table, which is similar to what we have in the, in the Southwest Bypass Plan. And that crosswalk table basically says, takes the existing zoning districts that we have and makes, and determines whether or not if a rezoning request comes in, whether it's uh, appropriate for that area based off the land use category. And then also we want to make sure that we're maintaining uh, coordination with, with other agencies in this, in this review process. So with that, the uh, the draft plan is available for review uh, at our, at our project website. That's pitcountync.gov slash NC forty-three South Plan. Uh, also along with that, we do have a link to a, a feedback page, uh, just three quick questions. Just, you know, how well does the plan sort of satisfy the vision for that area? Uh, do you support the goals and objectives in that plan? And if there's any other concerns uh, or other areas of concern that you have. So I would encourage everybody in the board to, to, to take the opportunity to go to the website, um, download the plan, look at it, um, and give us that feedback. Cause that's what we're going to use in the coming weeks to try to develop that final draft that we'll present back uh, for your consideration. And so if you have any other questions or comments, there's my contact information for anybody that might be watching at home tonight. Um, and like I said, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Is, does the board have any questions? I was at the um, meeting as Mr. Gooby mentioned, and uh, one of the questions that uh, we had at the meeting, which I thought was interesting, is somebody asked when all this was going to happen. Um, as like we make all these things happen, and Eric was uh, very diplomatic and um, addressing the question and letting him know that uh, this is just a guide to be ready for the development as it happens, and not something that's going to dictate uh, when it happens. Um, but uh, and I've reviewed the plan before uh, the meeting tonight. It's a very good uh, good plan. So hope all of you will take that opportunity to do that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm going to take you home. Uh, there's just a few informational items in there. And I'll reiterate real quickly that again, NC forty-three South, whatever you can do to help us get the word out about the plan. And it's in a draft format right now. We're still welcoming public input. And of course, that's coming back for your recommendation in early twenty twenty-one. So uh, help us get the word out. Make sure we get all the input we can on this draft plan. Uh, informational items, there are quite a few. Been a lot of action taken by our Board of Commissioners of late and a few that we thought were pertinent to what you might want to know about. Number one, Candlewick Sewer Project. You may recall, uh, the county was um, pretty much the applicant previously for phase one, uh, to help secure funding to run a sewer forced main out to Candlewick subdivision, which is about two miles west of the Greenville city limits on Stanton's Burg Road. So phase two um, is for a two million dollar project to help serve more homes in that vicinity. And the Board of Commissioners did approve that. And we're moved, we've already submitted the grant application for that project. We should hear back in February. Um, your rezoning request that you dealt with at your last meeting moved forward to the Board of Commissioners in November, and that was approved. You may recall that was for Larry and Tracy Lewis, the property right on County Home Road. Uh, two items also were dealt with by the Commissioners at a quasi judicial hearing uh, earlier this month. One was for a rather large solar farm of about three hundred acres just to the east side of the town of Grifton. That was approved. And also a residential daycare in the Belvoir area was also approved. There were some other items um, dealing with state roads. And it's always a good news story whenever these roads are taken over by DOT because that's uh, less of an issue with long-term maintenance by either the homeowners or the developer in a particular subdivision. So that dealt with one of the subdivisions that the board had approved some time ago. The other one, we are getting quite a, uh, I'll say a renewal process right now of several of our homeless program grants. And as you may well be aware, with some of the issues brought on by the virus, we're seeing more and more folks that are becoming homeless and needing assistance. So um, in turn, those funds are sorely needed here in Pitt County, and we've been receiving those. There are the monthly reports for October and November, some other articles in there. And Mr. Chairman, I would want to acknowledge a couple of your planning board members, Mr. Landron, one of our new members, did come by for an audience orientations uh, session with staff. I hope that helped him. Secondly, Ms. Fay is still with us tonight. Why is she still here? Well, she's serving until she's replaced. And uh, there has not been a replacement for her. So thank you, Ms. Fay Barefoot, for continuing to serve on our planning board until replaced. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for tonight. And again, happy holidays to everyone. We're sorry we couldn't get together as a group for our annual dinner, but uh, hopefully next year in twenty twenty-one, we're able to do that. So that's all staff has for you tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all your hard work this month and this past year. Um, and everybody on the board, I appreciate your service and uh, I look forward to having a Merry Christmas, and I hope everybody else does. And I'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Merry Christmas.
Third motion, do we hear second?
Second.
All right. Voice acclamation, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.